Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting of May 12, 2025, 6:00 PM, in Room 3 at Town Hall. I will preface by saying we will not have an executive session this evening. Can I have a motion to sign the warrant?
Motion, Mr. Chair, to sign the warrant of April 28, 2025.
I second that, and that is unanimous. Wait one moment for Selectman Walsh.
Good evening, Michael.
Good evening, Mike. Good evening. Sorry, it stopped traffic.
Second item this evening is the approval of the regular session minutes of April 28, 2025.
I have a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the regular session minutes of April 28, 2025.
And I second that.
And I am in agreement, and that is unanimous. Do I have a motion to approve the executive session minutes, May 1, 2025?
A motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the executive session minutes of May 1, 2025.
And I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I am in agreement. That is unanimous. We do not have any public hearings this evening. Scheduled appointments, we have the Human Resources Director with us this evening to discuss a social media policy for public bodies. Kristin, how are you?
Good evening. How are you?
Thank you. Thank you.
Excellent. Excellent. So, the social media policy, actually, we have a more intensive policy that's right now being examined by Kate and all the unions, so it's going through that process. But I believe, if Mr. George is there, he was the one to initially contact me and say, you know, could we carve out a social media policy for the committees, for the public bodies, because, you know, that's an important segment, and we could do that without the part of the process that, you know, is with the unions. And I said, that sounds great. So, we found ourselves a template policy, and we sent that over to Kate's office, and they, you know, reviewed it and made some adjustments, and sent it back to us, which is, I believe, what you, I assume you have in front of you, and you've had a chance to look at. Chris is actually a lot more involved on the ground level with this, so if he's here and he would like to speak to it, that would be great, because he has to deal with this more than I do.
Of course.
Good evening.
I always love policies like that, when you can pass it. So, what do you have to say now?
Thanks, Kristin.
I'm not dumb.
So, in this day, we have a lot of our, not only departments within the town, but committees and trustees that are creating Facebook pages. And right now, there's no guideline, there's no procedural path for them to take. And we want to make sure that the messages that we're putting out to the public are consistent and clear, and we want to make sure that the guidelines help our lay leaders and our volunteers understand the goal, you know, the goal for the town, the goal for the community, and this policy will help guide them there.
Good. Very comprehensive. I had read it over the weekend. Any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted, a couple of comments, too, you know, because years ago, the newspaper was the only way we could get our message out to the public, and it worked very well.
It worked very well, yeah.
It really did. And like I says, through the Health Department and whatnot, we got various regulations out, task force inspections out, a host of things that everybody understood and knew. Now, across, again, we're in the third decade of the 21st century, and we have social media that took the place of newspapers, you know. So, again, and I appreciate this policy now, because it keeps, it gives us, like I said, everybody a chance to be on the same page when they do put us something on Facebook, because I know several committees and departments do have their Facebook page, and it's working well so far, but let's put everything so everybody's on the same page.
A lot of departments with their Facebook pages are getting their messages out clearer and a lot easier.
Right.
The difference, Paul, is, you know, like Kristin and I are very well knowledgeable in our lists of goal, our lists of policies and procedures we have to follow, and our leadership, and our committees and trustees groups don't always know what Kristin and I know.
Sure.
So, we want to make sure that the messages they're giving to the community are consistent to the messages our Select Board and our administration have.
That's excellent. Yeah, and that's the way to do it, and I appreciate this. Like I said, it keeps everybody on the same page, it keeps residents involved, and it keeps that unit of trust, too, that, you know, we are transparent, and we're putting out what they should know, too, as well. The only question that I have would be on Section 5, Paragraph H, and I'll read it. It says, "If a member is contacted directly by a reporter or any other member of the press or media outlet, he or she must immediately refer all questions to the town administrator." Again, I know Ricky is a wealth of knowledge, but I know people who are in that position, such as a committee that they have served on for so many years, would probably know the context of what a reporter wants to ask probably better than anybody else.
You know, while we don't have a PR person for the town, the closest PR people we do have are Rick Filoni and Brian Murray.
Yeah, and I know someone like Rick would actually refer that, you know, to the department head.
I think the reason behind it is just for the initial ask by someone.
Sure.
To make sure it's something that we should be responding to.
Okay.
Many times I have to say.
And I appreciate that.
Litigation, it's a matter that is not open for public disclosure at this point. My goal there would be, I'd have the reporter reach out to me, and also have the committee member reach out to me and say, this is what I'm being asked.
Exactly.
And I can give advice and/or a town council.
Okay.
But you're probably right. Nine out of ten times, it might be something.
And I'm satisfied with that answer. It cleared it up for me, because I didn't get that just from reading.
The last thing you want is a media tug of war between who they've interviewed and the town.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I just want to know, just like I said, sometimes, let's say, if the wrong information got out, you know what I'm trying to say? And again, I appreciate that, and again, I'm sure Ricky would get the department head involved, or whoever would know more of that particular subject than anybody. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My first question, Chris and Kristin, I kind of get answered when I reviewed this, but the first thing I said to myself is, why would a committee or a trustee of the town be setting up their own Facebook page without it going through our IT department?
I'm going to answer that with as few words as possible. IT didn't start managing social media until a couple of years ago, and by then, a lot of departments and committees had already created their pages. And as David, my systems administrator, now takes over the moderation and overall management of each page, as we try to bring them in, we're just trying to get everybody down to make sure that their messages are the same messages the town is putting out.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So, this is going to address that question.
Correct. This is going to address the...
Everybody is... And to Paul's point...
There are many committees that have more than one page, because there's just...
And again, the reason I ask that question is that I was at an event at Louise's Lake a couple of weeks ago, and, you know, behind me was a conversation about some activity that's going on in the town, and I could tell that all the information they were talking about was coming from Facebook. And I finally had enough of it, and I walked up to the gentleman that were there, and I said, I can't really get into it with you, but I can tell you that what you're talking about is not accurate. I can tell you that you're getting it from Facebook, and, you know, this is kind of what's going on. But it's clearly, you know, inaccurate information, and that was my concern when I started reading this. I said, well, wait a minute, they've got their own Facebook pages. Who's monitoring what they're putting on there in their accuracy and their legality? You know, so this, you know...
I mean, just from that coming on, the three of you, or actually, the four of you know, a misworded phrase can mean everything, especially Tom, in winning a case and losing a case. So, you want to make sure that that message that committee is putting out is the message clear the first time. That way, whatever's transpired over Facebook is at least coming from the clear first message.
Sure. Right. Right. And not to pick on Facebook, but social media as a whole.
Social media as a whole, yes.
Yeah. And I think, honestly, and I agree, I think it should, you know, it should go through, you know, it should start somewhere, whether it's yourself or the town administrator, everything should be reviewed by somebody before, and then, you know, if that is not being adhered to in the policy, then, you know, the town administrator or yourself will bring it to the board or Select...
All content, we currently moderate. If we have questions on the content, I'll bring it to Rick, and if needed, I'll bring it to Brian.
Just so the information...
And then I let them bring it to that committee if need be.
Yeah, and if action needed to be taken, we could take appropriate action.
Right. It's, you know, some people will listen to that statement and say, oh, it's a control thing. It's not a control. It's just trying to make sure the information that's getting to you is, you know, out in the public sector is accurate information.
We want to be transparent. We just want the transparency to be accurate.
Correct. Absolutely. So, thank you both very, very much for this, being proactive once again.
Well, Chris started it, but I'm glad he did, because the idea behind this is to be consistent across the board, and also to give them guidelines. You have no idea how many times we're asked for, why doesn't somebody just tell us what the rules are? And it's huge to have that, and it's the same for everybody, so it's really big. And you'll see many, many elements that are in front of you will be in the other bigger policy that applies to all the employees.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions, Chris and Kristin. When I look at Paragraph 5, and for instance, one that was already discussed, well, I'll start with F. Members shall not disclose conversations that take place between officials outside of meetings.
You could take that a couple of ways.
Yeah, and that's some of the issue. I mean, are we in the position to tell an elected official that they don't have the ability to comment publicly about something that was said to them, you know?
We don't have that right.
So, I think you have to take a look at some of the wording there, and as well as with some of the other areas, and I'll touch on just a couple that jumped out at me. Paragraph H, if I'm contacted directly, and we already discussed this, from media that I should send them to the town administrator. I have a couple of questions. One, are any of the board members here, you know, then obligated to follow that protocol? And even further, are we as a board, if we adopt this policy, in the position to tell other elected officials that if the media contacts them, that they have to go to the town administrator before it goes out? And I think that in some cases, it could be extremely burdensome. The example I'll give you is the town surveyor. How many times does he get a phone call about roads being closed, roads that are going to be repaired, you know, from the media, et cetera? If you had to feel through Rick every single time the media contacted, if we look at departments, the police department, then we should hire someone to handle media, because it's going to be a full-time job. And then I do have concerns, are we in the position to tell, for instance, elected members of the parks department who get a contact about what's taking place now at Town Park, that they have to go to the town administrator or else?
Let's... Yeah, I understand what you're saying by the wording, because the wording does restrict a bit. I know the purpose of the wording was to, even with the elected officials, to help give them guidelines, to keep them on a track, but at the same time...
We'll get to the guideline part next. If we look at number 8, Paragraph 8, which is meetings of town public bodies, social And you come down, it says, "Members are prohibited from using their personal or town social media accounts to communicate directly with the quorum." That makes sense. You ought not do that. But that's governed by law, right? Open meeting laws, so we know that. But then it goes on to say, "Or friending or following members of your public body." So, if I have a Facebook account, and I have Paul on as a friend, and I have Mike on as a friend, I'm in violation of this policy, even if I never communicate with them through that particular social media, simply because they're friended. And they may have been friended before I ever became a member of a board. And when we take this across all of the boards, I dare say, if we took a look, for instance, at the school committee, and the number of employees that the school department has, or the number of board members...
It's vast.
It's right. You know, and is the town in the position to tell me who I can communicate by way of just having them as a friend? They can tell me not to communicate town matters.
Correct.
I ought not do that. That's an open meeting violation.
But personal matters, we can't dictate.
Correct. You know, messaging or responding to a comment or post by members of your public body is very broad. It's not commenting, I mean, in this case, there's three members. If I'm commenting, then I'm in a discussion with them. And if it's something related to the town government, again, it's open meeting law.
Correct.
But you could have school committee members that are communicating, and there's no quorum there, and they're communicating on something personally that's of interest to the community generally. And that's where I get to the sanctions, which is Paragraph 9. Violations of this policy will be subject to discipline, up to and including termination. Well, I don't know that...
You're on Section 9. I'm looking for Paragraph 9. Sorry, go ahead.
Is it Section 9? Okay. Oh, it's Section 9, because the paragraphs were all lettered.
Yeah.
So, that's why I called it.
Gotcha.
But in any event, number 9, violations, and it's saying to even elected officials that you're subject to discipline. Well, the only discipline I think we're subject to is if we violate the open meeting law, we're subject to discipline through the state.
Through the state, correct.
If we violate an ethics law, we're, you know, subject to discipline through the Ethics Commission. Other than that, we're subject to discipline through the ballot box. So, up to and including termination, I'm not quite sure who's going to terminate...
A volunteer.
The chairperson of...
Yes, or a committee member.
Whatever committee.
Yep.
The committee themselves don't have that authority, as we've learned in other circumstances, to remove someone.
Kristin, I think a couple of these we're going to have to...
And then to suggest that if someone does post something in their official capacity, that they are solely liable for any damages, losses, et cetera...
Well, that's not... I can't be right either.
I can guarantee you it's not right. They're going to get sued if they defame someone, but if it's related to their position...
In the town.
As a member of town government, you can better believe that the town is going to be named. And I don't know that the town, without an indemnification from every single board member and every single official that falls under this policy, indemnifies. I think you have trouble getting people to run for boards. Maybe we could fine-tune some aspects of it.
We can fine-tune.
Going through the town administrator, I think what Tom is saying, a routine announcement by the park commissioner to the press that they're going to have an event on a certain night should not have to come through me. So, maybe we can, maybe throw some exceptions there, and then work from there, for example. That would be one example.
I think in the paragraphs that Tom has mentioned and Paul has mentioned, it just, instead of leaving it broad, we're going to have to really...
You're going to have to be much more specific.
We have to be more specific. We can't...
The way to be specific, I would say, when it comes to social media, for instance, like I'm also a commissioner on the mosquito board for the state.
Okay.
There's times I get the call first. If there's a triple E mosquito pool, or a West Nile virus mosquito pool that they found in Milford, the press needs to know that now.
Yes, they do.
Radio needs to know that now. I'm not going to say, go call Rick, because now, public health is in jeopardy. Okay? We need to close practices after 5 o'clock. We need to, the area that they were found in, we need to have sprayed, people to close their windows and be prepared.
I would say I agree.
You know, because time is of the essence there. So, again, I can tell you right now, if this is the way, I will defy it. You know, I wouldn't say, call Rick. I'll answer myself and let somebody yell at me later.
But I think there's a broader discussion as to boards and committees as to how they're governed in general. I mean, you have water commissioners who are their own elected board, and they make a lot of decisions for the water department that we don't.
Correct. I mean, should this board, you know, is the town administrator, right, is an employee of this board, are we in the position to overrule the water commissioners, if they're going to issue something about the quality of water?
No.
No. And if the media contacts them, and they speak to the media, if they're, and I'm not saying they've ever been incorrect, I, let me paraphrase this way. If any board issues information that ultimately turns out to be wholly inaccurate, as I said, if their elected officials, they're going to be held accountable at the next election. If they're appointed, then they're going to be held accountable by the board that appoints them.
Again, no one is how to respond better than those that are on that board.
That's why defining a social media policy for a public body is even harder than defining one for staff.
Right. But they have to be guidelines that they know they have to go by.
Yes, we want to have clear...
When it comes to social media.
But...
But if just to talk to the press about an emergency or about something you need to get out to them, that's not, that's not social media. You know, you're talking to the Milford Daily News or the Patch.
We're talking about social...
You know.
We're talking about social...
You're not putting something on Facebook.
It just, you know, I mean, I just think, there are some things. I'm not saying it's not wise. I think that it's an issue of really looking at it, and we're trying to define their personal accounts, you know, rather than defining personal and town accounts to say, you're dealing with the town's official business, and whether or not they have the ability to put that out there. Social media is the media communication today.
It is.
Without a question. So, you know, I mean, it's the old thing, you know, a lie is already around the world before the truth puts its boots on.
Correct.
Right? So, but the fact is, is no information is bad.
Is information, right.
You know, that's misinformation, and that could hurt us as much as anything else. I just, and as I said, you know, when you take a look and you're saying, well, there's punishment there, I think then you get held to account, because you don't have the ability to do that which you said you would do. Given the comments, Chris and Kristin, you have enough to go now?
I've got enough from them to...
Other than at it, and obviously, you can bring Kate in, some of the questions on the legality of can we, or can we not do it? Or if we need to. We're, you know, I mean, Kate's dealing more with the employee side of it.
Correct.
I would say to bring, you know, town council, Brian Murray, and, you know, Jerry Moody, you know, based on his experience as well, just simply to say, you know, is this legally sound? Is it overly broad, so it means nothing? And is it something that is viable? I mean, such as the punishment section. It's just, you know, the town found out in one instance the hard way, that you can't just remove someone from a board. So, I, those are my comments. Other than that...
Kristin, I got to pick through this, and in light of Paul Mike's and Tom's comments, I got to make a couple edits, and we'll discuss them, okay?
Yeah, and we can bring it back before you again.
Okay.
Sure, for another review.
Sure.
At some point, want to get it right.
No, yeah, it's got to get, it's got to be right.
Difficult concept to deal with, especially for me. So, okay. And if we could get a look, I know you said Kristin's working with the unions, if we could get a look at the draft of what's out there right now, in other words, what is, what are we working off of in talking to the unions, whoever is talking directly to them? So that we have an idea of what's being discussed with them, and again, so we don't walk kind of into the same situation of telling them, sure, we'll have some collective bargaining sessions soon, and maybe we could wrap that in there without...
Yeah, I agree.
Might not be something I want to put on, we want to put on the table. Just knowing what the proposal is, what are we discussing with them, with the employees at this point, those that are, you know, represented? Yep, makes sense. And then we also have to keep in mind that there are a number of employees that are in those represented pools. Correct. So... Okay.
Kristin, anything else at this point?
No, no. We've got a handful of those policies out there with the, with the unions. It's social media and three or four others, I think. So, you know, well, they've already been reviewed by council, but now they're out to the unions, but you can certainly see them in advance, and, you know, we can go at it from all sides at once. Why not?
Yeah, it's just a thought, you know, you may eliminate some of the fight, you know.
Indeed.
Try.
Yeah, no.
Thank you.
Thank you both. No, good. Excellent.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Kristin. The next item is town administrator's report.
Yes, just one item tonight. Happy to report, I've been informed by Representative Brian Murray, he has submitted an earmark in the fiscal year '26 budget that not less than $50,000 shall be expended for upgrades to a pedestrian crossing at the Milford Youth Center, and to include other renovations or improvements. There has been some concern about the safety of this crossing with student pickups, the volume of traffic. So, I thank Brian for doing that. As you know, the budget will not proceed to the Senate, eventually to Conference Committee, before getting to the governor for final approval. Brian did say he's somewhat optimistic that the earmark will remain and survive Conference Committee, but all of you, I'm sure, are very aware of where we're talking about, basically from where the parking lot is across the street, crosses to the steps at the senior center. Again, not sure what upgrades and what would be involved. Obviously, we'd have to study that. So, I want to thank Brian for doing that. That's all I have for town administrator.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Rick. Old business. We do not have any items on the agenda. Moving on to new business, Veterans Department, a permit to obstruct for the Memorial Day Parade. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the request from the Veterans Department to obstruct for the Memorial Day Parade, as he described in the application.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I would agree, and that's unanimous. Second item is Prezo Grill and Bar, an amendment to the Common Victual License, all alcohol beverages, and a change of hours. So, they're adding, it just appears they're adding live entertainment, Rick?
Yes. Right now, they're looking to add on, the change of hours is Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and then the second, I guess we kind of separated them. The second item, the next item on your agenda is for the entertainment, and that's Wednesday and Thursday, 5 to 9. Basically, it's live music, one person being, maybe two people. So, right now, that's, so it'd be two separate items, F2 and F3 in front of you.
So, are they seeking a license for the entertainment?
Yes, that would be a new license. They presently do not have one.
Okay.
Correct, yes.
So, we would have to do that as a motion?
Yes.
And then as far as the hours go, I mean, the hours are within the statute. Do they have different hours on the license itself?
I think they do. They are within, they still would be within the statute, as you well know.
Do they actually have different hours on the license?
I believe so, they do, and I think that's the need to issue the new license, or I should say, the amended license.
Live entertainment is to be inside, correct? Not out of a party?
This is strictly inside, correct. This is strictly inside, correct. Correct, yep. Mike, yep. Do I have a motion?
I'm motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the common amendment to this common victual's license, and we got the change of hours, as described on their application, which would be Thursday, 11:30 a.m. to 1 a.m., Friday, 11:30 a.m. to 1 a.m., and Saturday, 11:30 a.m. to 1 a.m. And all paperwork is in order, from what I understand.
It is.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I would agree, that's unanimous. Do I have a motion as it relates to the issuance of a live entertainment license?
Yeah, I'm motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the live entertainment application, and I believe they're going to have it on, according to their application, Wednesday and Thursday, only from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. And live music, it'll be a one-person band, sometimes a two-person band.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I agree, so that is unanimous. There was no other items, Rick, that I...
Not for prezos, those were the only two, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. And then we have prezo amendment comments, so that we already did the entertainment license. Very good. Fourth item is council on aging, two new handicap accessible parking spaces at the senior center.
Yeah.
I received information from Dino Di Bartolomé.
That's the request, yes.
And the senior center is busting, it seems.
No question.
I don't know if anybody else sees that, you, I mean, they're parked on the street, et cetera. So I guess there's a number of people who do have disabilities, and if they're forced to park that far away, creates difficulties for them. So they're looking to take two existing spaces and make those handicapped. There are a number already.
Yeah, we do have a number already.
Yeah, there's a whole row there to the right of the building as you head towards the bike path.
Right.
So there's probably, you know, a framework of six or so.
I believe six or to eight, maybe, at the tops, yeah.
Okay.
Right along the fencing there.
Right, so they're looking to add two.
Yes.
If you gentlemen have any questions?
No, Mr. Chair, if no one has any questions, I'd like to make a motion...
Please.
...to approve it, because accessibility is very crucial in ensuring that residents that have a mobility challenge have access to the important facility, such as the senior center. So I think that's a good idea to have, and Scott says he'll take care of all the, what has to be done, such as painting of the handicap lines and whatnot. So I make a motion to approve this request.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I'm in agreement. So that is unanimous. The town administrator concerning town planner appointment process.
Yeah, just basically, as you know, Larry Duncan has announced his retirement, longtime planner, going to be sorely missed. I would like to start the process with the board's permission. I've spoken with Kristen on it. She is going to assist me with the various public notices and publications. I also would like to, and I have reached out to the planning board chair, to add someone to assist me, to help interview, whittle down the applications. Also, I looked at how it was done last time, we had someone from the CONCOM. Also, again, those are the two boards that work primarily with this position. So with the board's permission, I'd like to start that process as soon as possible. Larry has indicated he's retiring, I believe, I want to say, the end of August, if possible. I think budgetary, if possible, to maybe hire someone with a slight overlap, because it's a fairly technical, difficult position, and we have, and Larry's been here, I think, 17, 18 years, roughly. So with the board's permission, we can talk more about the process as we go along, as to how the board would like to make the final appointment.
August 29.
Is it 29? I could say it was somewhere in the end of August. Yeah, thank you. We can talk more about that, as to how the final position would be, final interviews before this board, however you want, and we can deal with that. But for now, I really would like to get the process publicized, start the applications coming in. Usually, we do it on a regular basis, and I would like to add a planning board member and a CONCOM member to assist me, and I think Kristen will also sit in for the interviews also, if that's okay.
I think Larry actually started the year before I started, PD, said it'd be 2001.
I think that's what he said. It's even longer than I said.
He just started 2001, yeah.
In the early 2000s, yeah.
He was...
In his letter, Mike, I think he said...
December 3, 2001.
You've got a good memory.
Yeah, great memories.
It wasn't, none of us were here then.
So...
So it's been longer than that.
Yeah.
24 years.
It's my sixth town planer.
What you're saying, yeah, yeah. Hopefully, this next one will be your last.
Yeah, I know. I know it. But anyway...
Again, I'd like to get the process going.
Yeah.
Report back to the board as we go, and again, for the final selection, obviously, the board's prerogative as to how you would like to accomplish that.
Right. And, excuse me, Mr. Chair, just a comment to Rick.
Sure.
Where I did appreciate the, in your description, you put the candidate should have basic knowledge and experience requirements, because again, as you know, this position is a crucial role in shaping communities as the town planner. And again, it's good to see a good education and experience in the background, because we like to see someone that's here with the town like Milford, with the zoning regulations we have, the projects and developments that we have, that we need someone to hit the ground running, and not having someone that just has to learn the ropes.
Yeah, I'd like, if I can, I'd like to work some overlap with town planner Duncan, if possible. If it's not, it's not.
I was going to say, I remember that if you have a committee Larry would sit on...
Larry is going to help me with the applications, and he, yes, he will be involved, correct.
Good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need an approval of that?
I don't, long as I have a consensus from the board that you're in agreement with, we start the process, and obviously, reporting back to you.
Great. There's no one in the audience for invitation to speak, Chris, anyone online?
There's no one online.
No one online. So there's no one for invitation to speak. I do not have correspondence.
Paul Mazakala?
No, I don't, Mr. Chairman.
Michael? I do not, Chairman. And I already indicated that we will not be going into executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.